April 5th, 2021. We'll start with approval of the minutes. Is there any adjustments to the agenda? We'll move on to the city clerk portion. Is there any updates for us, Sony?
Yes. I will be, let's see here, a public hearing resolutions on item five C. There was a request to delay action to next week of April 12th. I'll need someone to make a motion for that.
Who's making that motion?
Would you like?
No, I didn't volunteer for that.
And do we know why they want to delay?
The request was made by Councilwoman Raybold. There was a few attachments that I had attached. I think there were some questions about the development.
For one week?
Yeah, and Richard also asked. I mean, I was in a, James, I think you were in the same chatter. Yeah.
Perfect. I will do that.
Could, could someone contact the applicant so that he does not come downtown unnecessarily? I'm assuming, I'm making a second level assumption here, pardon me.
I am.
Wait for it.
Wait for it. Wait for it.
Steve Hendrickson of the planning department. So our, our, our thought was that the, we haven't had time to notify neighbors or anything, so that the hearing would go forward today, but I think she was asking to continue the public hearing to next time on the 12th, so that there'd be continued public hearing and action then on the 12th. But we'd still go ahead today and let Mr. Euler and the neighbors who have already planning to come down and talk.
That's so much more fair. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. So Councilman Christiansen, you'll make the motion for that? Perfect.
Yes, I will.
Any other updates, Sony?
I will be calling on sections six, items six B and six C together. And then ordinance is third reading. On the synopsis, there's a clerical correction. It's actually item six, excuse me, seven A through seven C. They were all introduced by Raybold. She's absent today, so I would need someone else to also move the motion.
I can do that.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you, Councilwoman Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And that's all I have.
All right. We'll move on to an update from our mayor.
Hello, everyone. Nice to see you. Happy Monday. Thanks for having me. It's the beginning of a sunny new week. I wanted to just let you know that we have three departments that are going to be giving you some updates on snow and short-term rentals and Cooper Park. So that's just ahead. And then on the vaccine front, I wanted to share how pleased we were to learn during our call with the state last week, during, with the call with the governor, that he does intend to redirect allocations of doses, to some degree, from districts, health districts that have lower demand to districts that have higher demand, like Lancaster County. And we've been really working and advocating for that kind of a reallocation, given the high uptake of vaccine here in Lincoln and Lancaster County. So very pleased that there's a potential for more doses, and I'm sure Health Director Pat Lopez can give you the latest on the expected number of doses that we'll have in our community this week and next. We are really just continuing to be grateful to all of the volunteers who are helping to make our clinics be successful, both the large-scale clinics that we've held at PBA, at the Lancaster Event Center, and at Speedway Sporting Village, as well as some of the smaller clinics. I had the opportunity to stop by Mount Zion last week and see, you know, somewhere up almost near 300 folks who came out to get the vaccine at that clinic as we look to target folks who've been disproportionately impacted or who may have had concerns about the efficacy of the vaccine, and through our relationships with the Health Department and our community, working to overcome that so that as many people who are eligible here in Lincoln and Lancaster County can get the vaccine as quickly as possible. And thank you to all of you for your communication with constituents who contact you. The more we, you know, invite people to help us end the pandemic by getting vaccinated and by following those proven public health strategies, the better off we all are. So thank you as well for being ambassadors in this monumental effort to get our community protected. I was pleased to announce last week that I have nominated Acting Chief Engler to be the permanent chief of Lincoln Fire and Rescue. We've been so impressed with his work over the past few months as we've worked with him in this role, and I look forward to you having the chance to talk with him more about that, and he'll be before you for confirmation. I respectfully ask for your swift confirmation of Chief Engler. We are really pleased with his innovative approaches, his willingness to work across different departments to solve problems and to take a look at long-term planning needs. So he's really, he's got his eye on the ball. And then with the police chief search, we did announce last week, we released a public report on the public, four-week public engagement process that we undertook. So you can find that online at lincoln NE.gov/policechiefsearch. And in addition to publishing that, we published the job position announcement, the updated description that took into account the feedback we received from community members, from department stakeholders, and from the department members themselves. So that process is underway. The Police Executive Research Forum, the search consultants that we've hired to assist us, are now out actively recruiting candidates to find a great fit for our community and for the department. Again, lincoln NE.gov/policechiefsearch for details if you get constituents who are asking for that kind of information. With that, I'll just see if there are any questions.
Are there any questions for mayor? No, seeing none. Thank you so much.
Did anyone else pick Baylor as their top bracket? Okay.
But really, did anyone pick Stanford?
Thank you.
Don't want the women to be forgotten. It was a great game. I'll stop. I could go on for minutes.
Looks like next up, we have Director Liz Elliott.
Yes, thank you. We wanted to give you guys all an update on our winter operations budget. We've had an opportunity to take in all of the invoices from our contractors, as well as see what we need to replenish for the season. So our winter operations budget is, for this current fiscal year, is 5.3 million. It appears that we will probably be exceeding that by about 1.2 million. This does account for all of the costs that it will take to replenish our brine, our salt storage, as well as anticipated personnel hours for the rest of this fiscal year. Because as you know, winter operations is a year-round process, not just our winter months. So this is what we are projecting and expecting for the rest of this fiscal year. So approximately 6.5 million total. We did expect, or we do believe that the residential test program will continue for this year. Obviously, this last year was a historic winter, and so our test program was really tested. And we do expect to do that one, at least one more year to really see how that plays out, hopefully in a normal winter, whatever that is for here in Nebraska. So that is going to be rebid this summer. It was just a one-year contract, so we will rebid that out this summer and take some of the lessons that we learned during this winter operations, both from our perspective as well as our contractors. And we will start that process again probably midsummer, June, July-ish is what we're looking at right now. With that, are there any specific questions?
Are there any questions for Director Elliott? Seeing none, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, give you a quick update on short-term rentals. This was an item that we were working on and hoped to have sent to the Planning Commission last April, and then obviously that didn't happen. So we continue to receive comments during the year, and so in February, we released our most recent draft to the public, sent that out as large and wide as we could, did meet with the mayor's neighborhood roundtable to make them aware of that. We're still looking at short-term rentals, then now coming back through the process. Tentatively, we're shooting for a May 12th Planning Commission hearing, meaning that it would then be before the city council for your June 7th meeting, if all goes according to plan. The basic proposal is that it be a conditional use, so that it would not be a special permit. The condition would be, first and foremost, that there would be a license required for short-term rental operators, whether you're residential or commercial zoning. That would come through building and safety, which would do some just very basic items. That way, we have an emergency contact, those type of things. That way, we also have the ability to track them in terms of their location, because in residential areas where we previously had proposed to keep it very similar to how it's currently allowed, which is as a home occupation, you have to reside there to have a short-term rental. The proposal that came out in February is that you wouldn't have to live there, but in order to minimize having one neighborhood with suddenly, due to its proximity to downtown, getting a lot of these, we would do 600-foot spacing, or about 200 blocks, 200, 200, two blocks, two-block spacing between them, so we wouldn't get a lot of concentration in one neighborhood. And so that 600-foot spacing is a similar idea that we had seen, has been used in Las Vegas, and also Louisville, Kentucky. There's also Slida, Colorado, among the communities that we did see. And so that kind of idea of spacing, we have some with, some other uses, such as group homes and transitional living. So we thought that would be a nice kind of compromise, that you wouldn't necessarily have to live there to operate it, but yet we wouldn't see a concentration in certain neighborhoods. We also then had to tweak that a little bit in terms of an apartment complex. If the apartment complex can meet the spacing, then internally, they wouldn't necessarily have to have internal spacing. So imagine a 200-unit apartment complex, rather than saying, they can only have one, because when you put one in there, internally, it wipes them all out. They'd be limited to no more than 10% of their units. And when you think about a large 200-unit apartment complex, that would be about 20 short-term rentals in there. But when you're at that scale of an apartment complex, I don't think the adjacent property owners would really see much of an impact. There'd still be people coming and going. It's just a short-term rental versus coming to their apartment. And so that spacing, though, would only apply to our residential districts, downtown, commercial districts. You could have as many short-term rentals as possible, because we don't see that. That was really the concern. And then the last part of our proposal is, is that we would also have a grace period for all of the existing operators, because a lot of the existing operators didn't know there was going to be a 600-foot spacing if that was adopted. So our idea is that we may have a three- or four-week period that we would advertise. If you, if you want to get your license, get started, here's your period, and you don't have to meet the spacing. Then after that grace period is over, everyone thereafter would have to meet the spacing, because we do know already of several places where somebody bought two houses side by side and is operating them together. And so we thought that was the fairest way to, to address. Or one person has it on one side of the street, and one person has it on the other. Do we just have a race to whose seat gets down to downtown first to, you know, sign up? So we thought that was the, the fairest way to probably handle the 150 to 200 or so existing ones that are out there. So that's a quick update. Happy to answer any questions. And certainly what we would look at is then, after Planning Commission, if you were interested, we could give a much more detailed briefing to the city council before the public hearing. That way, you have a chance to see what the Planning Commission recommended and hear from the public then as well, because we're continuing to hear comments on, on both sides. People who think our proposal is way too lenient and way too strict. So you'll, you'll probably get a, a good variety of comments.
Councilwoman Washington?
Mr. Hendrickson, I have two questions. First, on the grace period. So just so I understand, the grace period is such that if, if you've given people 90 days or whatever to apply for the license, after that point, if they've missed that, then they're out of compliance and they don't get to get a license if they're within 600 feet of someone else?
Correct.
Okay. And then I know that you, you went forward with a slightly different proposal than what you just presented to us, and I'm just curious, which pieces of this proposal changed because of input from the neighborhood, roundtable, or the public?
I, I would say probably the most thing that we had heard, and we had an informal online survey to get comments, was from people who said, you know, I bought a house, I don't live there, I fix it up, I have online comments, I get reviewed every single time. I have to keep that house pristine. I worry about, you know, my neighbors. I don't want to get in trouble, but I don't live there. And I think that was the most common thing we heard and made a difference to us. And it is, a lot of communities don't have a residency requirement. So that is probably the, the biggest change that we made, was based on that input that we heard from the previous time.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Did you hear much about parking, Mr. Hendrickson? Before, when we were going through this process, like, among other things I heard from the district were parking concerns when people would come to town for football games and rent short-term rentals or stay. Other neighbors, sometimes were concerned about parking in front of their homes or near their driveways. Can you talk about that at all?
Sure. No, that, that was something that we heard from, from some people. Sometimes it was related to the house is really being used as a party house, and our definition is going to include that you cannot rent this out for parties and occasions. That's going to be a bit of a challenge in, in terms of administering that. So you'll still have to meet the parking requirement of, if it's a single-family house, you have to have two parking spaces. What we had heard is, the vast majority of the times, it's not a huge parking issue. Sometimes there, there is. But we thought by trying to require more parking spaces than perhaps the house might normally have, it, it could be, get a challenge, because it might just be a one-bedroom house, and if we're requiring three stalls, now they might have to change the character of that house to try to add a third stall somewhere. So it was kind of a balancing act of, well, just because it's a three-bedroom house, do we require three stalls? And then we've always found it's a real challenge to say, what is a bedroom? Because at the minute you start to defining it as it has a closet and a window, people take the closet out and say, well, it's not a bedroom anymore. But it's, still functions as a bedroom.
Thank you very much.
I was also just going to add, from whenever, if you do adopt the changes, though, actually probably first be a six-to-eight week period just for setup. That building and safety, have a lot of things to do. I mean, we're already working to try to get the license and all that, but we want some time, so it's not just immediately the next day, so there'd be some time just to get it set up, and then we would have the grace period. So that way, people wouldn't have to, also be concerned that, hold it, the next day after you adopt it, they have to run down here. We would already need a break before we would start that. And, and we would advertise it based on when you take your action.
Councilman Choe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Hendrickson, thank you very much. My questions are along the timeline question that you just kind of answered. I'm sorry, I was making notes on what you said. I didn't get the Planning Commission date.
Sorry, so we're tentatively shooting for May 12th, and we'll, we'll definitely, once that is set, advertise that for people. We have been meeting with some operators and had, corresponding with some neighborhoods. So it'd be May 12th, and then if they make a recommendation at that meeting, it would be then before you on June 7th.
I have a little bit of a concern about, by doing this and putting dates in hearings, are we creating a land rush on short-term rentals now? Are people going to rush out and buy something to beat the deadline? Have you considered that?
I think if you adopt something and say, we're going to have a grace period, we do anticipate it is possible that some people will say, well, I've been thinking about this, and they'll just come in and get a license for their house, just to be safe, and then maybe later decide to let it go. I mean, the license is going to have a fee with it to cover all of building and safety's cost for administering this. So it, it's not going to be a $5 kind of a fee. So I think there'll be enough that you wouldn't just do it on a, on a whim. But, so, so for, yes, for one year, you might have a license for somebody who would say, well, I just did it kind of speculatively, but then every year you would have to, to renew it.
And this is, there'll be an annual renewal on the license.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Hendrickson.
Any further questions? Councilwoman Washington?
All right. On the multi-unit, 10% of multi-units, is there a certain minimum size of a multi-unit, so if it's a four-unit building?
We would say that all apartment complexes, which would be three units or more, would at least be able to have one.
Okay.
So if you, 10% was only 0.7, you'd at least get one.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Director Lynn Johnson.
Good afternoon, everybody. About 10 days ago, I think, many of you received a message about a meeting in the Salt Creek neighborhood. And I, J.J. Yost, because of Councilmember Choe's assistance, we were going to have J.J. Yost, our Planning and Facilities Manager, attend at least a portion of that meeting by Zoom. And I think what we learned is that there's a lot of questions out there right now, and there's a lot happening right now. There's work going on at Park Middle School. We have a master plan, and we're working through implementation of the master plan for Cooper Park. And L T U is working on, excuse me, on improvements to South 8th Street. So what we've done, and you should have received a memo from me about this, we have a meeting scheduled for 6:30 on Thursday evening at Park Middle School. It's going to be an in-person meeting. We'll be in the library. We should be able to be socially distanced. We'll make sure that people are wearing masks. And we plan on making brief presentations about the Cooper Park Master Plan and Implementation, the Park Middle School improvements. Scott Weascamp will be there to do that. I'll talk a little bit about the proposed land transfer, so that people have an understanding of what is being proposed. And then Thomas Schaefer will be there to talk about the 8th Street improvements. And then we'll have a question and answer session after that. Councilmember Ward has agreed to, to host the meeting, and then John Carlson will be facilitating the question and answer portion of the meeting. You probably knew that there was, Planning Commission review was scheduled for the land transfer last Wednesday. We were able to put that on hold, and that's now scheduled for next Wednesday, the 14th. The message did get out to the neighborhood. We had nobody present at the Planning Commission hearing last Wednesday for that meeting. We've, hopefully, we've done a good jo, excuse me, done a good job of noticing this meeting. We've sent out letters to everybody within a 200-foot radius of Cooper Park. We've got six onsite flyers. You may have seen that there was an article in yesterday's newspaper, and we're also doing social media. So hopefully, the neighborhood is getting good information about this meeting. Right now, the tentative schedule for review of the real estate agreement would be that it would be introduced on the city council agenda on May 3rd, with public hearing on May 10th, and then action tentatively scheduled for May 17th. And I'm waiting to hear what the schedule for the school board review of that real estate agreement is. And so hopefully, Scott Weascamp has been out of town for the last nine days. He should be back, I think, late this evening, and so hopefully, I'll have more information about what the schedule for getting that real estate agreement before the school board is. And with that, I'd be happy to ask any questions that you may have this afternoon.
Are there any questions for Director Johnson? Councilman Choe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't really have a question. I just want to say thank you. The neighbors called us and emailed us, and I appreciate you being attentive to their concerns.
Absolutely. I think one of the things that, that I think we've understood is that when we started working on the Cooper Park Master Plan in 2017, the Neighborhood Association was really just being reformed at that point. And there was a working group that worked on development of that master plan. We probably made a bad assumption that they had a good system in place for reaching out to the neighborhood. And so I guess I'm, I'm not surprised that there may be people out there who don't know that this process has really been in motion for four years at this point. It is good. I think we do, we definitely need to pause and make sure that people understand everything that is going on and have the opportunity to comment on it, so.
Councilwoman Washington?
Director Johnson, one of the things that I heard, I attended the public, I attended the neighborhood meeting last, a couple weeks ago. And one of the things I heard pretty clearly from the neighbors were that they were very concerned about the playfield and it being transferred potentially to LPS, and that, that it needed to, they wanted it to be open and available when school was not in session. And, and they brought up some, you know, they were very concerned. But one of the things that was part of their concern was the fact that the people who most use that playfield as a soccer field are folks who are not super actively involved in their neighborhood association, and English is not their first language. And so I want to, I hope that we have an opportunity between now and Thursday, or right after Thursday, to make certain that this information is being shared with those folks in Spanish. That is the primary language.
Great suggestion.
So even if, if a flyer and some basic information could be done in Spanish, that could be very helpful.
We can definitely make that happen, and thank you for that suggestion. And I would, I, the other thing I would say is that we are working on strengthening the provisions within the real estate agreement about that, that proposed shared playfield. The other thing that we're going to be proposing is an interlocal agreement that has more detail about the management of that playfield, how the community will be aware that it is available. And I would say this is a brand-new model for LPS. I think you probably all know that typically, LPS playfields are fenced, and they don't allow use of them. This model of installing artificial turf or sports turf is being done at Park Middle School and is being done at Everett Elementary School. And so this is a brand-new model that we'll be working with LPS on to make sure that that playfield is available, that it's, it's signed, and we need to obviously make sure that it's signed in more than one language about when the playfield is available for community use, and obviously more details to work through.
Any further questions? Will, will you please remind us when the meeting's scheduled for?
It's 6:33, pardon me, 6:30 PM on this coming Thursday, April 8th, at Park Middle School, and we'll be in the library. Obviously, we don't know how many people who are Obviously, we don't know how many people will attend. If we need to move, we'll move to the cafeteria to make sure that we've got a space large enough to accommodate the number of people that are there.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have Director Pat Lopez with Health Department Update.
Good afternoon. I'll just be brief. We have currently a total number of 29,840 cases. We had 33 additional cases yesterday. We expect to see a decrease because of the holiday weekend. Typically, we have fewer cases reported. Our total number of cases reported last week, ending April 3rd, was 360, which is slightly higher than the week ending March 27th, which was 343. We're having a weekly case rate of around 335 cases, and that's been pretty steady the last six weeks, starting to see a slight increase last week. In December, we had 5,833 cases. And in March, we had 1,453 cases. So we have some difference going on there. We can see some improvement. Our weekly positivity rate was 7.8 for this last week, ending Saturday. The previous week, it was 6.7%. So, and we also changed our positivity number, our recovery rate, and you'll see that on the dashboard. And this new number reflects that change in definition that we adopted last week. Based on what we've learned throughout the pandemic, we've changed that. And if anyone has passed 60 days of being positive and currently not hospitalized and has recovered, we count them as in those recovery numbers. There are several individuals who remain hospitalized for a longer period of time. And just today, we have an increase from 19 cases on Saturday to 29 cases hospitalized in Lincoln, and 25 of those are residents from our community. You may have heard or seen in the paper today, the discussion about many of the people being hospitalized are in the younger age group right now. That's holding true for Omaha as well. And Omaha and Lincoln seem to be the areas where the hospitalizations are ticking up a bit, perhaps more so in Omaha than here. So we're really monitoring that closely. Onto vaccinations. We have administered now 182,865 doses of vaccine to Lancaster County residents. And of those doses, 116,083 individuals received their first dose. And we now have 66,782 who've received their second dose of Moderna R50 vaccine. And all 72,164 are 29.3% of the individuals 16 and older in our community have completed their vaccinations. And I'll see slight variation when I say the second dose in that, because we have done doses of Johnson &amp; Johnson. Last week, we did a second-dose clinic at the Asian Community and Cultural Center. The successful, we had our first clinic at Mount Zion Church. And it was very well-received in the community. And we intend to continue working with Pastor Combs and the other African-American pastors to sponsor additional events in the community. They just did a tremendous job, both at the Asian Cultural Center and at Mount Zion, the volunteers, and the working together as a community to really reach individuals was outstanding and very much appreciated. We're very grateful for the opportunity to be welcomed in. This week, we also did another 5,000 doses that were second doses for age 65 and older and educators. And last Monday, we did 8,000 doses for those 65 and older. So in 14 days from this Thursday, we'll have vaccinated, those will be fully vaccinated individuals 65 and older. This week, we're vaccinating 16,000 second doses for 55 and older individuals, and an additional 8,000 first doses to those 50 and older. We have a lot of people really excited about that. We are also planning to host a 5,000-dose J&amp;J, Johnson &amp; Johnson clinic next Saturday at Pinnacle. And we had our first event at Lancaster Event Center. That was last Thursday, when we did those 5,000 educators and those over 65. We also, this Saturday, will be having clinics at both hospitals, Bryan and CHI St. Elizabeth, for individuals with serious underlying health conditions. That's been very helpful for people in our community and has created an opportunity for us to work real closely with our primary care physicians in identifying individuals that need to be seen. So we're really planning to vaccinate more than 30,000 individuals this week. So we did get a slight bump up in our vaccine. We have 4,500 additional doses of Johnson &amp; Johnson. I believe the governor and his team at HHS are looking at ways to get more vaccine into our community. We've been tremendously successful in getting people interested in receiving the vaccine. So we're, we continue to be really grateful for that and want to get it out as quickly as possible. I think it's likely by the end of the week, we'll be going to the, you know, the 50 and under to Phase B. That's where we anticipate moving to. So I'm going to stop there, see if you have any questions.
Any questions for Director Lopez? Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you. Pat, I have a question about restaurant workers. So I know that they were considered essential as of, I mean, last year, that we kept restaurants open as much as we possibly could, and we've been very supportive. But they work in really close contact with each other. And I am very curious what we can do to ensure that those businesses get the support they need with vaccinations. Can you tell me, where will they fall in the priority?
Well, we, I appreciate you asking that question. I did mean to update you. We have sent out information to all the restaurant managers and others. And on Friday, we sent out to all those who are servers in the restaurant, the first 15,000. And the other number of that, of those 30,000 will go out, has probably gone out already today. So we've created a special link for them to register, because we have vaccine available. We'll be working with them now this week to start getting scheduled into the vaccine clinics.
Will that include the back-of-house? I mean, the cooks who work on the line?
Everybody.
Great.
Everybody.
Thanks so much.
And it's not just the restaurants, it's the bars, everyone.
Yeah.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Director Lopez, thanks for getting the link out, and a number of us were contacted. And I know you responded quickly with, to the service industry as quickly as you could. So thank you for that. So my question, on the population that are seriously, have underlying conditions that are serious, is that still then, the other criteria, criteria is age with a serious underlying condition, or could it be anyone, any age? I'm asking because I've had a number of people, not necessarily seniors, with underlying conditions, under the age of 50, contacted their physicians, waiting, want to go out of town to get their vaccine, just checking to see your advice. I tell them, go wherever there's a vaccine. But I'm not a healthcare professional. But that's been my response. So can you tell me about the criteria for those that you work with, with underlying conditions?
And well, actually, the physicians, we've worked with them, and they've established the criteria, and it's like an ICD-10 coding, it's a diagnostic coding. So that's what we use in the offices, provide us with the information. And then we reach out, we look at that data, see who maybe has already had their vaccine and not. But people do get overlooked. But we have been vaccinating people who are in chemotherapy regardless of their age, who have had heart transplants, kidney transplants, people with chronic lung problems. So hopefully, individuals you know are being taken care of, or you can always have them contact me, and we'll make sure. We just don't want people to be overlooked.
And you've done that, and I'm really appreciative of that. Do you have a sense, is it all right? I mean, for someone, I've had relatives, 30-ish, just get in their car and go to Carney or wherever? Does that get, I mean, does the system allow for that? Are you concerned? Is the advice I'd be giving, say, don't drive away, we'll get to you? I mean, you know what I'm asking, it's...
Well, everybody that wants a vaccine is going to be able to have a vaccine.
If they just are a little more patient.
What I do say is, you know, think about, you know, I want to make sure we get every resident of Lancaster County that wants a vaccine vaccinated.
Right.
But we have vaccinated healthcare workers, others that don't reside in Lincoln outside. But I think the thing they need to remember is if they get a first dose someplace, they have to go back there and get their second dose, because that's how the vaccine comes into us.
Exactly.
So that's one of the things, but I know that's happening. I hear a lot of that. I think that's all I can say on it.
I understand. No, I understand. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Director Lopez.
Thank you all.
Are there any other directors I would like to address the council? Making sure I don't forget anyone. Perfect. Okay, constituent correspondence is posted online. If there's nothing else for the good of the cause, we'll be dismissed until our council meeting at 3 o'clock.